Back in session.
You're gonna have to do the 21st something, there's a bond that has to be certified. So I think you have to do the 25th.
Good evening, everyone. Back in session and tonight's meeting. The Cohasset Select Board will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live stream Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate in the Zoom platform, which can be accessed through a link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at the discretion of the chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide their full name and address for the public record. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143. Now we open up to public comment. Do we have anybody?
No comments.
No comments? Alright. And it's 7:10, let's move on to license permits and events. We have a public hearing for the transfer of restaurant all alcohol beverage license from White Crane Inc. Doing business as Feng Shui to Stoke Pizza LLC. Doing business as Stoke Pizza, 380 CJC Highway and Alteration of Premises. And a common victual license Stoke Pizza Cohasset LLC DBA Stoke Pizza. Do we have anyone here who wants to speak?
Hi, good evening. To the chair and members of the board, my name is Adam Barnowski, attorney with REW 255 State Street in Boston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Stoke Pizza LLC. For the property located 380 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. With me tonight via Zoom is Doug McGregor, the co-owner of the business. And Tor Miller, also the co-owner and the proposed manager of record. We are here regarding a same location license transfer. Of an all alcohol beverage license as well as an alteration of premises to include outdoor seating. And a CD license for the site. The licenses will be utilized in a new Stoke Pizza restaurant at the location currently operating as Feng Shui. A little bit about Stoke, Stoke is a full-service, family-friendly restaurant which serves a variety of high-quality, unique pizzas and salads along with numerous appetizers and vegan options. Stoke was founded by Tor Miller and Scott Reedling over 10 years ago. They started out as a food truck. The company now has two brick and mortar locations, one in Brooklines, Washington Square, the other off the Harvard Law School campus on Massat in Cambridge. They continue to operate the food truck as well as the catering business. This will be the location, this location will be the company's third brick and mortar restaurant and the first on the South Shore. Stoke takes pride in its fresh and local ingredients partnering with Lily Put Farms and Wareham. Where it, which grows organic produce for the company. Ingredients are delivered to each Stoke location seven days a week so they can avoid freezers, preservatives and processed foods. The beverage program plays a very important role in Stoke's operation with a variety of beer, wine and cocktails available at each location. And we'll get more into the concept momentarily. So about the property. The restaurant's located on the left end unit of a multi-tenanted commercial building. It will be located on the first floor of the property and consists of approximately 5,400 square feet with indoor seating for 150. The alteration of premises application before you tonight relates to proposed outdoor seating immediately adjacent to and contiguous to the restaurant on private property. This will have seating for 20 patrons. The outdoor area will be operated seasonally, weather permitting, most likely between April and October. The occupancy of the interior of the space is 180. And Stoke seeks to operate seven days a week with licensed hours unchanged from the current license. That is 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM Monday through Saturday and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Sunday. And while the restaurant clearly will focus on lunch and dinner, it would like to retain the option for earlier service during special events or expanded lunch. So this is going to be a dining-centric establishment with a focus on food. While alcohol services is a requisite part of the business plan, this will not be a totally a bar or a late night concept. As I mentioned, Tor Miller is the proposed manager of record. Tor has been the owner and operator in the restaurant business for over a decade with prior management professional experience. He has previously served as manager of record on liquor licenses. Within the state overseeing sales, service and training related to alcoholic beverages. During nearly 10 years of holding multiple liquor license, neither Tor has managed the record. Or Stoke as the licensee has had any violations before local boards of the ABCC. So briefly turning to the, the idea of public need, as the board is aware, anytime an application comes before you, there becomes a question of public need. Here the town already licensed this location for alcohol upon a presumed prior showing of public need. This will in part be a continuation of that use as a same location license transfer. Stoke, as I mentioned, is new, it's gonna be a food-focused restaurant, it'll serve the public good, it's a high-quality amenity for the neighborhood, residents and community at large. The business will be run by professionals with a history of success within suburban markets. They've owned and operated Stoke locations for years and it becomes staples in the communities in which they operate. The outdoor patio, which is the only new component of this licensed premise, will be an amenity for the business and will provide locals with additional dining option during warmer months. The use is consistent with the industry and government's proactive approach to outdoor dining as evidenced by last week's law enacted to give local licensing authorities like yourself a broad authority over outdoor dining. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on, on the application. I did want to pass along briefly to Doug McGregor to talk a little bit more about the company.
Thanks, Adam. I'm not a big Zoom guy, everybody can hear me? Thanks. Yeah, Doug McGregor and I usually introduce myself on these things with Seven Border Street, resident here at Cohasset. Also partner investor in the same way I am with Stoke with Salty Days down in the village at the Red Lion. As well as locally, Locally's Taco over in Hingham. And I am Brian's sort of silent investor in Seabird Coffee and here in town in Duxbury, although that's all, that was Brian's creation, not, not mine. I plan that this will be something I'm equally as proud of as I am with Salty Days and those other things I named. It's a great group. Which I've been part of since we built our first restaurant. So I want to reiterate, this is the same team, same investors, same operators, Tor, what you see here on the screen. A great group of people and a great business model and as a resident here for, I'm, I'm a newcomer, only eight years or so here in town. But I really am confident this is gonna be a big hit or I wouldn't be doing it. So with your permission, I'm looking forward to being another another asset to the town. Things I just want to repeat from what Adam said. Actually similar to Salty Days, family-friendly, a larger format, pizza, wings, beer, cocktails. TVs, you know, a place you can go and watch the game with a group of people, you can go on date night, we plan to keep the cocktail lounge specifically adult only, so girls' night out for a grown-up cocktail, don't have kids running around in that section, but we're 100% family-friendly the rest of the place. With the town's permission, we might seek a couple pinball machines or something in the back for fun. But overall, it's a big, family-friendly restaurant with the food as described. Our current menu plus some more items that we're working on and at this point, I sort of step back, Tor is my, my operator and he'll have any answers to any questions you have on the operational side, he's been in the business longer than I have, decades. So good team, good concept. We, we look forward to hopefully approval and doing something exciting.
Hi folks, Tor Miller. I'm more than happy to answer any operational questions you may have.
I have a question. And what were the hours of operation again? On the license, on the license?
Yes, so the license currently has an 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM licensed hour for Monday through Saturday. And 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Sunday.
And what are your hours for serving food?
Well, I think, I think the idea-
Are you gonna be serving till 1:00 AM?
Well, I think, I think the idea is, is in, you know, Tor might be able to speak to it specifically as it relates to some of the other locations, but I think the idea would be primarily lunch and dinner service. But having those expanded hours on, on either side to accommodate private parties, there's, you know, different, different programs that sometimes would allow for, for an expanded use. But Tor, would, would, could you focus on, on, on kind of generally when, when, when operations both open and close?
Yeah, absolutely. So we operate our, both of our restaurants in Cambridge and in Brookline from 11:00 AM until 9:00, sorry, 9:00 PM on most weekdays and then on Thursdays and Fridays, we're open until 10:30. We open up at noon on Sundays. I imagine that we will mirror something similar to that here. But we, coming into a new market, we would definitely want the flexibility to expand hours. And like Adam said, for private events, you know, maybe some World Cup games. Something like that, opening up early, but we, we won't be serving pizza at 8:00 AM, 7 days a week, that's, that's for sure.
But we will be serving food anytime we're serving alcohol, of course, because that's a requirement.
Yep, that's, that was my question, so.
Oh yeah, no, 100%, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Food, food always served. That 8:00 AM caught my attention as well and I want to be clear, it was sort of our deal to, we are purchasing Feng Shui effectively so they will go away. And so we can do something different there. The deal was predicated on getting the same license, which has a good value because of its flexibility. You might say, why would you be open? The thing I can think of is an Irishman living on the South Shore. Is that a couple of times a year, there might be some big event where there's a soccer, you know, soccer or footy or rugby game and we might want to do an event. Or have something that stays a little later than our expected hours of 10 something, 10:30 PM. I, I know from experience up and down 3A that dining really wraps up around 9:30 or 10:00 on most places, so chances are we'll do that, but we do want the flexibility. You know, I'm taking some chances here, we're doing something, we want to be able to know we can adapt and adopt as needed if, if the demand is there. So hopefully that's a decent answer.
So the 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, those are the, the licensed hours of operation, that might not end up being your actual hours of operation?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's 100% correct. I, I, I imagine that we will be closing very similar, if not the same hours that we do in Cambridge and Brookline. And just to be clear, we do, our kitchen is open the entire time that we are serving alcohol and it'll be the same here.
They close at 10:30.
I have another question. Yep, who's gonna be the onsite manager?
I am.
Okay, so so for 40 hours a week, you'll be in Cohasset?
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll be, we'll have other managers working alongside me.
Okay, but I think Chris, don't we have to have a named manager on the license? So, okay, so-
That is me.
So you're no longer the named manager on your other two locations?
We have general managers at both of our other locations and assistant managers. So my attention will be focused over at Cohasset.
Okay. And do you do takeout?
We do. We do a really brisk takeout business.
Okay, thank you.
I'm supportive of the application. We, we've all known and loved Feng Shui for many, many years. A refresh feels about right. It sounds like in terms of operations, it wouldn't be much of a big change from what we've seen at Feng Shui already, so it sounds like the applicants have their act together and I'm supportive of the application.
I concur with Chris.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
There are, there are three elements, this, you need to approve the transfer.
Yep.
They are looking to add a patio, which does not currently exist, so you have to approve the alteration of premises stairs. Then you need to approve the common victual license.
So, alright. I make a motion to approve the common victualer application for Stoke Pizza Cohasset LLC DBA Stoke Pizza located at 380 CJC Highway Cohasset, Mass. Proposed manager Tor Miller with the hours of 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM Monday through Saturday and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM Sunday.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call vote?
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Okay, so-
One down.
One done. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for a transfer of the on-premise. Is that Chapter 12 Restaurant All Alcoholic Beverages License of White Crane Inc. DBA Feng Shui to transferee Stoke Pizza Cohasset LLC DBA Stoke Pizza located at 380 CJC Highway Cohasset, Mass. 02025. Proposed manager Tor Miller with the hours of 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM Sunday.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye. Two down.
Two down, okay. And finally, I'd like to move to approve the application from the transferee Stoke Pizza Cohasset LLC DBA Stoke Pizza for an alteration of the premises to add a patio as shown on the plan submitted at this hearing.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
When are you gonna open?
Well, now it's in the states, hands, right? For the license to go to ABCC and back, so we will, with your permission, I'm gonna take some chances and order our big oven from Italy. And start spending some money and we'll hit the ground running as soon as that license comes back. Feng Shui, our agreement with them is they will close seven days after that license comes back. And so when that happens, I have a couple of months of work that I'll be overseeing and then we'll be open. Ball? You can see my fingers crossed, that's, that's my plan.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
How's your food?
How's the food? Award-winning, but don't ask us, I'm trying.
Have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You as well.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, moving on to the EPM warrant. View and vote all remaining articles.
Yeah, I think you're-
Am I missing something?
No, you, you still have to revote a couple things. Apple, which I'll have the show walk us through.
Me too. It's very small, I don't even know if you can see it.
Oh my god.
Vegan options.
Beautiful, how's it for you guys?
Used to grow time, instead it's dying.
Okay.
Alright.
So, um, we just had our Capitol meeting to revote and vote some additional items. So tonight we took four different votes. The first one was on the town hall roof. So the vote now is $325,000. It was a 5-0 vote in favor of recommending that.
That's a, that's a bright team.
So.
On the warrant, on the, on the, on, on section B of Article 8. If you turn-
Section B?
Section B of Article 8.
Looking at Article 8.
On the second page. It's like a long list of priorities.
Water, it's probably, oh. Where did you say it was? I'm sorry, Chris.
It's number 18, it's now, that's up to 325, that includes the other money that we're gonna pull from.
Yeah, because their first vote, they had taken it out and didn't make any sense.
The next one that was voted was the access assessment, 41 Highland Ave. The MMA, MAAAB access assessment at 41 Highland Ave for $20,000.
Number 25.
Also a 5-0 vote in favor. The next is the fire suppression and alarm upgrade plans and specifications for 41 Highland Ave. $45,000 was voted, 5-0 to recommend. And lastly, there was a change to one of the school items on the Chromebooks at Deer Hill Elementary. They reduced the number of Chromebooks needed from 100 to 75, therefore they revoked the amount at $26,250. And that also was a 5-0 vote in favor.
That's number 14. Number 14 was reduced from 30.
Do schools add Chromebooks at Deer Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, from 175.
175?
And those are purchases. That's a purchase, right?
Essentially, so it's a lease in the buy of the end of three years is a dollar.
So what did it go?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So, so it went from-
35,000 to what?
26,250. I just wonder why the 75 or the 100 at 35 is much more per unit than year three of the lease in number 12. Yeah, I know, I know, I-
I can provide you with all of the information that was provided to Brian Host through email. So you have it. But I don't have it with me.
That's okay. Good job, Michelle.
Fantastic.
We got, we got-
We got, we got what we needed.
You've already voted all the others, so you're gonna basically revote, in fact, you know, take votes on 12, 18, 25 and 26.
12, 18, 25.
Yeah, he's a chair-
He's likely gonna answer Ellen's question.
75 units are purchased, not leased.
So begs the question, why aren't we leasing the way we are leasing our whole Chromebook fleet? But, that's fine.
So we're gonna vote?
Well, we need to vote 14, right?
14. 25 and 26?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's 14, 25, 14, 18.
18.
14, 18, 25, 26.
So moved.
Second.
For 14 or the whole?
Everything, 14.
Everything. 14, 18.
18.
25 and 26.
26, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye. Well, good.
There any else, Tracy, I don't think so. The next thing you need to do is to adopt and publish the warrant.
Yes, to, so to vote, to close, sign and publish the warrant.
So then I need to make a motion to close, sign.
About this?
Yeah, you gotta be signing something.
Before we do this-
Okay.
Sorry to interject, before we-
We gotta add that piece.
Yeah, do we want something on the citizens petition? How do we want to deal with that? The last, the town hall part? The town hall petition, sorry.
I'm sorry?
For the informational summary piece?
Right, so I said that I would take a stab at something, which I did, and Jean had edit. And if I can find it, Chris said you were gonna put it in there, but-
48.
Is it in there? We could also not put one in there and just wait until town meeting and address it as it comes, that's another option. I just didn't want to lose that because we talked about that at the last meeting.
Yep, so, so this is, this is what I wrote. The Cohasset Select, with Jean's edits, the Cohasset Select Board is not recommending the citizens petition to town meeting as written. Although we are in agreement with the spirit and intent of the petition and have met with the petitioners on several occasions. The petition itself not only fails to identify a funding source, it does not account for public procurement and prevailing wage requirements. We look forward to working with a petitioner along with other constituents and interested parties parties in a working group this summer to develop a responsible, affordable and comprehensive plan for 41 Highland Avenue.
I like that.
I would support adding that.
I would support adding that to the-
To the warrant, excuse me. Part.
Instead of being added to your vote on Article 25. If somebody must move it.
Think about the other.
I'm sorry to interject, not to be a lawyer about this, but when we talk about funding source procurement government, maybe just put comma among other reasons. There are other good reasons out there, Mark Cameron. For example, on advisory raised a bunch of good reasons that I don't wanna fail to recognize like the rework issue and so maybe we just do a comma among other reasons and leave it at that, because Ellen, what you referenced are the primary reasons.
So include them and say, in addition to other factors.
Sure.
Or just, or just say, I, not only does it fail to identify a funding source, it does not account for other factors.
Such as?
Such as- Such as-
Identify a funding source.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Such as okay, I don't know why I can't type in this right.
I know my brain is sort of freezing right now, too.
That's my computer here. Everybody alright with that? Addition?
And other, you add, at Jean's? Just to make sure that, like Mark? The other reason.
Yeah.
The factors. So Ellen, you're putting, the petition itself not only fails to identify a funding source. It does not account for other factors such as public procurement and prevailing wage requirements?
Yes.
In the interest of getting this right on the warrant, are we gonna read through that one more time?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. The Cohasset Select Board is not recommending the citizens petition to town meeting as written. Although we are in agreement with the spirit and intent of the petition and have met with the petitioners on several occasions. Petition itself not only fails to identify a funding source, it does not account for other factors such as public procurement and prevailing wage requirements. We look forward to working with a petitioner along with other constituents and interested parties in a working group this summer to develop a responsible, affordable and comprehensive plan for 41 Highland Ave.
So do we need a motion to add that to the warrant? With Article 25?
Yes.
Yes.
I would move to add Ellen's statement to the warrant with Article 25.
Second.
Call a favor, roll call vote?
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye. Sorry.
You would just send that to Tracy and then she'll just plop it in, okay, good. I think on the, did we vote on the line, Adams?
We did, we did.
Did you vote on the line?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
You do, you do need now to vote to close, sign and adopt warrant. A publish them, sorry.
Did they just, I'm kinda lost here, I feel like here I didn't-
They, they edited section, they edited the statement.
And that's all it took, huh?
Yes, correct.
But did they, did you vote broadly?
I thought they did.
We did, we voted, are you talking about the numbered ones that Michelle brought that we have some changes on?
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted them all in.
And that's
Close, sign and publish the warrant.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I would move that we close, sign and publish the warrant.
As written with edits? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Are you gonna be available, are you not gonna be available this meeting? Sign this?
I'm gonna give Michelle power of attorney to sign on behalf of me. Michelle, I'd like you to copy my signature, please, if you can do so.
Okay, your chief.
I'll do a quick email after you, Michelle, how about that? No electronic signature, huh?
Okay.
Actually, can you do an electronic sign? I can electronically sign it if you want.
That's in next year's budget.
Touche.
I don't have anything else with the warrant, I think we're good, so the, the only other thing is, so the advisory is meeting Wednesday, and they asked if one of the select partners was available to attend their meeting to just walk through the noise ordinance, and it's, it's signed it. All right, is anyone available to do that on Wednesday evening?
I can, I'll do it.
No, Helen, you were there regularly, so it's on Zoom.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that's it. Just sign me in, um.
Okay. Moving on.
The, the only update I have to bring up is just, uh, uh, so I'm, I'm planning to take not next week, but the week after off. Uh, and there's a meeting scheduled for the twenty first, it turns out that because of the bond issue that's looming, uh, the board needs to meet on the twenty first to sign off on um, the, the bond issue. Um, and then there's one adjournment, I think of the, um, tavern, the Gulf Tavern, it was adjourned to that date, too. Um, a- and if you wanna, uh, I'm, and Michelle will be there to come for, so, um, if you wanna meet again before the meeting, I, I, I am back the next week if, if, for the twenty, so. You have a short meeting on the twenty first. I think you need to cover those things, so.
Well, and I would, I would think that we would need to parse out the articles and decide who's gonna speak on which ones and which ones we're not gonna speak on.
Typically, you do, you could finish it by the twentieth, but yeah, you need to do that before the meeting. But it gives you one week, it's, it's a weak breather for the first time in a while.
So we could do it on the twenty first, or we could do it on the twenty eighth?
You, you, you have to meet the twenty first because there's a deadline on a bond, that could be, you could meet for just that purpose if you wanted to. Uh, but you also have the st- continuation of the Gulf Tavern scheduled for the twenty first.
Right, so it's a light meeting, so, so my, my point being is we could hammer out the articles on the twenty first as opposed to meeting on the twenty eighth.
You have to decide if you wanna have a meeting between after ten meeting.
A meeting after ten?
I, I.
Oh, because that's the first Tuesday.
First one, well, the, the election's not till the eighth, so you kinda meet the eleventh day for your reorganization, so. All right, so the twenty first is set, Michelle will be me.
Hey, Chris, one thing I think we may wanna prepare for on the board should consider is, um, how best to support, uh, and this goes to Ellen's discussion about the, um, articles. How best to support and provide uh, a presentation orally or otherwise in coordination with Tom Callahan on the zoning articles, there is a lot there. Um, some of it's, you know, ministerial, some of it though is um, significant, uh, whether it's housing choice or otherwise, and so I think we as a board should think about that, so that may be something we wanna really talk with Tom about, cuz I think, I know we've been focused a lot on town hall, but I do think that those could be some significant issues at, um, at the town meeting.
Do you, do you think having a public session before a town meeting on that is what is, is?
Well, he's got a forum coming up.
I was gonna say, he's got a forum coming up.
You know, and, and perhaps, well, I, I, I don't know the content of his forum, but maybe well, however, whatever he presents in the forum might be sufficient for town meeting presentation.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I think it's good for, and we should think about this as a select board, if we wanna split up, standing up also with Tom, not just leaving it to Tom, but, you know, as a select board also coming up and supporting him for those articles, because um, you know, it is our working group and, uh, goals and ideas that are driving this as well, um, you know, just to help smooth that through. Um, but we can talk about it later, we don't have to talk about it tonight, I just wanted to put that out there, cuz at our past meetings, Tom did ask for our help in that regard.
And the, and the art, the, the, the order is as it is, right? Right?
I think we keep the order as is unless anyone would like to change it, it's sort of in the normal order that we do our annual town meetings. Um, you know, starting with the budget, et cetera, going from there.
Well.
The only thing I'm tempted to do with the order is the two citizens petitions.
That's.
Might get a little more attention if they're earlier in the agenda, and that might be something folks are more interested in. So just in the interest of trying to get community engagement on the topics that people are interested in.
I agree with that, I thought the same thing, it's, it up and get it. Make your recommendation, that's gonna be while the town's engaged, they should really go along with that.
Yeah. I know Tom always has an ongoing concern about quorum at the end with, uh, zoning articles. Um, I'm just looking.
Might, it might be a way to keep people to stay.
Uh, I.
Sorry.
Michelle's on a table.
So it sounds as if just from the discussion we had on Capitol, um, with the petitioner, it sounds as if they may be pulling that petition on town meeting floor, um, because of all the great work in, um, collaboration with the select board, so I think that's gonna be their intent.
Yeah, that's the town.
The town hall one, yes.
So if we wanted to move the petition up, particularly if one of them's gonna be pulled, where would you put it? Would you put it after article fifteen? Before we hit all of the zoning bylaws, or what's the, what's the thought for the two petitions?
Yeah, that, that seems like the right place, Jean, a- after we get through all the budget questions, which are typically pretty straightforward and clear. That's when we start to get into the meat. And I do think there's gonna be some interest in that water, water bottle ban petition, so uh, that's what I would throw out there, is that it becomes the new article sixteen.
And then leave twenty three and twenty four, twenty three is the noise control bylaw, that might get a lot of interest as well.
So maybe that one moves, too.
Although, but don't we want some with interest at the end to like maintain forms?
I, I agree with you, I think there's the noise and something like that at the end, I would agree with that, and also, um, zoning always is pumped to the end, and Tom's got a point, we've got some key items in there. We know it's long, laborious, but he's done a hell of a lot of work. The whole committee has.
So keep the hot button items at the end?
I'd say at least.
The bottle ban, the rehab, the noise control.
Can they, if the petition was, can they pull that petition at any time, they have to wait till it's called?
They have to wait till it's called, but they can also, they can, they can move to, to advance it up the line. And, and the town meeting will have to approve it, the moderator would have to allow it and.
But would he be telling the moderator that, say, let's, I'll just use the name, Mr. Longley got up and said, uh, we wanna pull. Could, and the moderator said, okay, but I know they can move it up, but do, we don't wanna go through.
Well, y- y- you can't pull it without moving it up, cuz it has to be, uh, once it's on town meeting floor, it has to be definitely postponed, that's be a vote.
No, I agree, I'm just saying, would he have to tell the reason for moving it up?
I mean, he could, he should.
That's, that's all I'm saying, that's all I was asking. You know, like, we're gonna pull. And or not. So that's.
But he has to get a hundred percent of the signatories on the petition to agree.
It might just be easier to have, to let it linger until the end, and then if the majority of people don't, if it's a moot point, then, but they're not withdrawing, and then you can easily move it to a vote. You know, just dispense of it.
All right.
So it's staying the same.
Okay.
All right.
You all agree?
Yes.
One thing I just raised real quick, and not to retread this ground, but, um, I just noticed Brian Host's comment in the chat. He suggested that, um, remember we talked about an HVAC study, and we wanted to see maybe if we could put that on, but we didn't have a price, it looks like capital may be inclined in that direction if we added a twenty five thousand dollar study, is that something we wanna do? Um, if so, this is the last night to do it, you know, advisory and capital can always make the recommendations at town meeting. Um, what do y'all think?
I would say yes, if we can tie it up. HVAC for, for town hall, right?
Yeah.
Forty one Highland Avenue?
Wasn't the concern there that we would trip the requirement to do all of the accessibility issues?
Oh.
So, so we've since learned that the study is not gonna trip, um, any of the issues, it's the actual building permit and the amount on the permit, the permitted work that that adds to that.
So studies and things like that.
Do the studies and well, that should help us out.
But could we, could we do the study? And then sit on it until enough time has passed that we have the option to act on it without tripping? If we're doing this study, not doing the work.
Depends upon what the appraisal is and what the free and fair market value of forty one Highland Ave comes in at. If it comes in at a million.
Right.
Well, it, it's, it's a million, it's nine eighty six, if it comes in at two million, then you can do six hundred.
My fear is just that we're gonna end up doing the study twice, if we're already expecting that we're going to be waiting to do the work, is it gonna be stale by the time we get back to being ready to do the work?
Right.
Hey, Chris, can I make a suggestion on that? I think it's better to do the HVAC study now, because I think this piecemeal paying for it approach, when we do the numbers, when we get the actual information in the door, we're quickly gonna see that it makes no sense to do this piecemeal approach, if you wanna do a minimal repair, you should bundle all of the repairs and keep forty one on the town's books. Then we should just do, you know, a debt exclusion, a capital debt exclusion at, you know, the, three to eight million based on HVAC sprinkler, like accessibility, all the things that we know are out there, we just need to land on a price. The study only gets us the price, and then we have to decide what to do.
I could say all. Wait, Jean, I'm sorry?
All the study does is get us a price, and it gets the nonprofits a price, if they wanna look to on their end about, um, you know, what the true cost of a repair might be, um, if they were to do it, like, what are we really looking at there?
Can we add it now that we've closed the warrant?
I don't know, Chris, can we?
You're already closed, well, you could reopen the warrant if you want, I mean, uh, hey, hi. I, by the same token, I, I will just, uh, cuz by, part of what I was still was advocate, there's a lot of things in motion right now. These additional studies that are going on, the, the MAB study, the fire, I mean, there's gotta be a lot of work over the next few months, plus we have the recreation stuff heating up. Plus, we have the work that we have to get moving on, on the public safety station, so I don't, I, I don't know if, if, if this becomes like the extra straw, you know?
Right.
At this point, uh, they either won't get done or will break the system ten measures back, so I.
We don't wanna do that.
No, so, but I mean, what, worst case is, not worst case, an option is in the second half of the year, we can say we want twenty five thousand from free cash to do the study. You know, if things level out, because I do agree, there's a lot going on, and we better be good at what we have already committed to, as opposed to being just okay at a broader breadth of things. And so, so maybe I, I would, I would defer, but keep it in the back of our minds, I don't even know if twenty five thousand is a good number or not. It is a good number, okay.
We did, we did get a quote, um, when we were looking at everything as a whole, and twenty five thousand dollars was to study the HVAC as a whole for the entire.
So maybe once one thirty five King Street gets up and going, and you have an OPM on contract to manage, and the rec projects are coming to their end, then, then maybe we'll have time, and we have special town meeting where we can, we can bundle everything if we need to do it.
Yeah.
Rec projects, just so you know, are hitting the street, um, Wednesday. So those bids are going out Wednesday. Um, the RFPs are going out Wednesday, and we'll expect responses, I think, three weeks thereafter.
In the interim, in the interim, Jean, we are working with the nonprofits as well, you know, the committee is our working groups getting off the ground, so, um, I think they're gonna see, but what we put together now, that we put some skin in the game already. Um, so, and you've got enough in your plate. So, and we've already closed the warrant, so why don't we just give it?
Closed.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure we didn't miss an opportunity.
Are we meeting next week? No.
No, you're meeting on the twenty first, you got a week off.
Okay.
Um, if you're, if you're gonna move to my report, my report is, I have nothing else to report to.
All right. Now, let's move on to select board comments. Ellen?
Um, I hesitate to say this based on what we just talked about, but at some point, can we get a report on Q three financials?
Yeah.
We had one in January for the first half of the year.
In fact, I think I, I believe I actually have them already, so I can circulate them before the next meeting. They'll report on the May twenty first.
Okay.
There'll be a report.
Okay, and then the other thing, and again, not, not for right away, but I did notice in the open space and recreation charge, they are supposed to report out to the select board. So maybe after town meeting, after the elections, maybe we hear from, from them what they're up, up to, other than the, the citizens petition, I'm not quite sure. That's all I have.
I don't have anything, you're gonna read the statement?
Statement. Jean?
Just wait for the statement.
All right, well, as promised, the select board's made, uh, is making a very effort transparency in regard to something that's important to us all. The statement will be released tomorrow in regard to Cohasset Harbor and the ongoing situation, uh, with Situit. So May sixth, twenty twenty four, after months of Cohasset's repeated efforts at good faith negotiations, the Cohasset Select Board was unable to reach an agreement with Situit's Select Board on the management of Cohasset Harbor. While we are disappointed that the select board was unwilling to reach a mutually acceptable agreement, the Cohasset Select Board remains committed to maintaining Cohasset's decades-long responsibilities for safely managing, maintaining and providing public access to the waters of Cohasset Harbor. Cohasset will continue to manage the mooring fields inside the breakwater, provide harbor master services and police patrols, maintain public access and keep the harbor open to all. Cohasset has, has maintained sole responsibility for the operation of Cohasset Harbor for more than a century, including the creation and maintenance of the current channel, the dredging, layout and safety of the existing mooring fields, the regular maintenance, dredging necessary to maintain safe navigation for recreational and commercial boating, and collaboration with state and federal agencies for navigation, environmental protection and ensuring public access. It has been Cohasset's harbor masters that have rescued struggling sailors, managed the mooring fields and maintained safe navigation practices. It has been Cohasset taxpayers that have funded harbor improvements, paid the salaries of harbor staff and acquired property to ensure public access to the water. Putting this next up. And federal gov- governance for grants, I apologize, for grants to maintain the harbor and prioritize public access to the waters for boating, sailing, fishing, kayaking, rowing, and simply enjoying the natural beauty of the harbor. The Cohasset Select Board stands for fair and open access for all to Cohasset Harbor from its mooring fields to its surface waters. Unfortunately, Situit has prioritized commercialization for private interests of this amazing public resource. The Situit Select Board has further made a grab for control of waters inside the breakwater, which they have expended no resources, no funding, no staff, no public access, no dredging, no advocacy for state and federal funds, no oversight, nothing at all for decades upon decades. Our Cohasset predecessors have long understood this. Since eighteen ninety four, the Cohasset Yacht Club has encouraged yachting through the promotion of good fellowship among those interested in sailing, senescip, and the pure enjoyment of the ocean and the beauty encompassed in its environment. During the nineteen forties and fifties, Cohasset invested significant sums to dredge the harbor. Since nineteen sixty, the Cohasset Sailing Club has been a resource for children of all ages and incomes to learn the art of sailing and safe navigation. Since its purchase of Bassings Beach in nineteen sixty eight, the Cohasset Conservation Trust has managed the beach for all to enjoy. Cohasset Maritime Institute has been teaching children and adults to row since nineteen ninety four, and the Cohasset Center for Student Coastal Research has been teaching children of all ages in the study of our local watersheds, marine environment, and in the importance of their continued preservation and protection since its founding in two thousand and two. Cohasset has been the. Cohasset has been the sole custodian, conservator, and protector of Cohasset Harbor, including the hiring and paying, staff purchasing, and maintaining the boats and equipment needed to maintain safety, boat ramp repair and maintenance, investing in the breakwater on a needed basis, and paying to buy, repair, and maintain property in and around Cohasset Harbor, including boat ramps, parking areas, harbor master facilities, harbor master boats, and police boats. The Cohasset Select Board is committed to protecting this public investment made over the decades. To further that charge and to maintain free and open public access to the waters of Cohasset Harbor, the Cohasset Select Board will continue its litigation regarding the unlawful licensing of aquaculture farms and will join the litigation seeking to uphold the safe navigation bylaw enacted by town meeting in December of two thousand and twenty-two. While Cohasset has put its money, its resources, and its time into public improvements, public access, and the preservation of Cohasset Harbor, it will now also put resources into legal defense made necessary by Situit's grab for control over resources for which it has literally invested nothing. While the Cohasset Select Board has long sought a negotiated alternative, Situit has instead chosen to litigate rather than negotiate. All Cohasset mooring holders should remit fees and applications to Cohasset by June first, twenty twenty-four. As has been the past practice, Cohasset will continue to fight to ensure that the harbor's waters remain a public resource for all. We have approval of minutes. April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the Cohasset Select Board minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye. Any topics that are reasonably anticipated? They were forty-eight.
I do have one. I wanted to follow up on an email that we received regarding the speed bumps for, I think it was Howard Gleason Road. Uh, had a brief conversation with one of the folks organizing that. Just want to see if the select board is comfortable with letting those folks on Howard Gleason move forward, subject to confirmation with Brian Joyce that he is comfortable with their plan. Proposal is that the residents would buy the speed bumps and work with the town for the town to install and remove them seasonally. I know we don't have Brian here tonight, so I would suggest that, uh, we chime in on this, subject to confirmation with Brian, that Brian is comfortable with this plan.
How does Chris feel?
Uh, so if I may, I actually talked to Brian Joyce about this today. My understanding is that was the path we're moving down anyway. Um, so, um, I, 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 we were kind of modeling the park rav where the residents buy them and we install them and then take them away. So, I, I, I was under the impression the board had given us somewhat of a green light at some point in the past. I could be wrong.
The folks on Howard Gleason were just waiting to make sure it was all right. I don't know if Brian was in the same place or if there was a miscommunication, but it sounds like.
We're good. So I, I, if you feel the need to move, that's fine.
I, I don't feel the need to vote. Just wanted to make sure we touched on it to make sure it was out in the open. Okay.
Second session. Yeah, Chris, I think that was before our joining the select board when they had that because I don't remember it. I, I, it's fine. Anything to, for safety.
Yeah, I don't think we had, we didn't have a problem with it back then.
Yeah.
We'll have to follow the same model as we used for Parker.
Great.
There's no issues with bicycles. I know a lot of kids ride their bikes to.
Run around them.
Run around them. Okay.
Hey, anything else?
I have nothing.
Move to adjourn?
Uh, second?
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.